Okay, 6:00 PM, we'll call the meeting in order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please, Maureen.
Mr. Bembel?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mr. Beers?
Here.
Mr. Krings?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mrs. Rehm?
Here.
Thank you, Maureen. Before we start, I'd like to wish a happy Veterans' Day to all the veterans in attendance, as well as any of them that may be watching from home. Thank you for your service and for all you've done for our country. We very much appreciate you protecting our freedoms, so thank you. To start with the special presentation, we have an update on the MEAT Community Outdoor Learning Center.
So we wanted to share with you where we're at because we've made a lot of progress, and we thought a picture is worth a lot more than just language. So this is a show, just to start off, showing you the construction that we've completed so far. So this was the very, well, this wasn't the very first step. The very first step is getting all the plans and all that background work that happens. I've learned a lot about construction and reading plans, totally outside of my wheelhouse. But, so we started off with having the pavement cut. We hired, had to hire a company to do that, of course, because that isn't the equipment that we have. All kinds of help, so you can see little help. This is actually-
That's me, some of my neighbors.
Yeah, that's her little boy. And then the big help, we've had lots and lots of help, actually. Rotary, we've had several volunteers from Rotary that have helped us. Mel's been out there, I've been out there. We've had some of Mel's family out there. Some teachers have stopped and helped, so there's been lots of work that's gotten done with lots of volunteers. Drainage was laid, obviously, you can see some of the drainage there. This just kind of gives you a scope of the whole scene. This is our courtyard at our school, and you can just see the size of the project, because that's a pretty big piece of equipment in the middle there. Kind of gives you a picture of it. So this was prepping for the concrete. Did you know they have bendable two-by-fours? I, you know, like I said, I've learned lots of things. There's bendable two-by-fours. Because I didn't know how they were going to manage through this path. It really didn't occur to me to think about it much, but our kids were given a little extra recess time one morning when they were pouring the concrete. This was done at about 7:30 in the morning. Kids come in for recess at about 8:25, so at 8:15, the second, or 8:10, I should say, the second concrete truck came in, and they were pouring down on the end, and all the kids were lined up with the fence. Unfortunately, I don't have a picture of that, because I was at a meeting here when they were lined up with the fence there. But they have learned a lot, because we've had the teachers teaching about the different equipment that's out there, because this is happening during the school day. So the kids are looking out windows, taking breaks to look out windows. They've learned a lot about the different equipment, and why the different equipment, and what is that material that's there when we're talking about road base, and soil, and wood chips, and all the gravel that went in, and all the drainage. So that's been quite exciting. This was a surprise to me. It never occurred to me that men actually stand in the cement as they form it. Just, you know, I've learned too. So, concrete was all put in. You can see where the forms are. We have a couple of concrete pads and the concrete path, and it's colored concrete, so it actually matches the, you can see there, the color matches the brick of the building, so it feels very natural. Here, the soil was being brought in, because of course, much of it will be soil. And then, we had wood chips. And, so one area had to have the wheelbarrow wood chips, because you couldn't reach it with the big machinery. So, I was hauling wood chips and inviting people to come and join me. Unfortunately, I hauled a lot of wood chips that day. And then, the big machinery was able to come in and help out. This is when, this is where it's at right now. Of course, now it's frozen with snow on it, but this was the last day when Jack Esther was removing his equipment from the project. This is what it looked like. So, this is the base. The base is done, and the kids are so excited. They want to go in and they want to play, and we can't let them play, because it's just soil. We can't plant anything, it's too cold. So, oh, no, you put it-
I was going to say, huge kudos to Jack Esther, because he was so meticulous on his project, and we couldn't have asked for anyone better. And in the beginning, when the excavator was in there chopping up the asphalt, I felt like we were doing something illegal. Like, oh my gosh, this is really happening. And so, it's kind of neat that five years in the making, and oh my gosh.
Here we are.
Here we are. It's a good thing now.
Yeah, I actually texted Craig that morning. I said, "This is happening at MEAT, just in case somebody needs to know." I don't want to do anything wrong. It's kind of silly, but truly, I just want to make sure we were on the right track. So this is where I needed to click this. This is what, a vision of what we're thinking much of it will look like. This obviously isn't a replica, but we want you to get a clear picture of where we're going next, now that the base is developed.
So we had one of our Community Outdoor Learning Center committee members, who works at Waterworks and Lighting. He is really good with all this kind of stuff, and he put this together for us.
So these are raised beds, and our vision right now is that community members will be able to plant in the raised beds, kind of like is happening at Howe School.
At first, the idea was a sponsored brick walkway, but we changed our mind from that. We will still have the bricks incorporated in there somehow, so people could purchase bricks with their, with their names on them, and we'll incorporate them in a different way.
So this area here is the gathering area. We have a grant from Rotary that will completely build everything needed for the gathering area.
Nature Art Area is an area that has been sponsored already. We have a building area hoping for a play kitchen, and a smaller weather station. We actually did receive a weather station through a grant from Dantar, and it's really, really fancy. It'll be connected to the building, and it'll be connected to Weather Underground, so we'll be able to get real live weather updates in the, in the school building.
And there's someone donating plants for our butterfly garden. I don't think it's completely donated, but we do have the milkweed that's necessary, for sure. And two picnic tables have been donated for our rest and relaxation area by a family that builds picnic tables that attends MEAT School. That happened after our last family activity night, when we had this showing, so people could come in and see what was going on.
Thanks for doing that, Craig.
Yeah.
There we go.
All right, so what's next? We've, now that we have the base laid, now is when we can really, really get into the fun stuff. So, we have, our gathering area is going to be the next big space that needs to be completed, because we received a grant from Rotary, and there's a deadline on that. So, most, if not all of it, needs to be completed by May 1st. So this is when we can start gathering supplies and people to start building things. We're still continuing to fundraise. So as funds are raised, we can start buying supplies and different building materials for the different areas, and hopefully, you know, we'll find a way to build things outside the building, find places to store things, things like that. And then, we're also going through and itemizing each area's needs. Okay, what do we specifically need for the music area? What do we specifically need for the building area, et cetera? So, go ahead.
All part of the construction learning process.
Yes.
So this is support we've received so far. We have naming rights, it's a $5,000 donation, so John Moffett, John and, oh, I lost his wife's name, Mrs. Moffett, have donated $5,000, so they have the naming rights for our music and movement area. That's just recently that we just received that. The $10,000 was the Rotary grant for the gathering area. The two picnic tables have been donated. The weather station is sitting in my office, waiting to be installed. It's supposed to go up on the roof, but we need to have outside Wi-Fi over the gathering area, and that's something in working with the technology in school here. There, where we had a meeting, well, we had a meeting set up, and then people couldn't make it, so we're resetting up a meeting, and that will happen. And then, Ed has some stumps for us, for our building area, where he's saving them for us over winter.
Where would you possibly get any stumps? I mean, all those trees on Lincoln, maybe?
Yeah, and he has, well, I have pine stumps, and I don't really think people want to sit on pine stumps. That sap will not be so friendly.
You might take the stump with you.
Right, right. So we've received that $10,000 Sunrise Rotary Grant for the gathering area. We have, we have about $700, $800 in one account, and then, right around $439 in another. And as we're figuring things out, we're realizing we need at least $35,000 more. As, as we look, really look at items for the different areas, we're finding they're, they're expensive. So, for example, the music and movement area, I mean, if we want to get a good quality outdoor instrument, I mean, we're looking at maybe $3,000 a piece for some of them. So, you know, we're really, we want to do this well, so we don't want to get anything cheap that is going to need to be replaced, short term. We're looking long term.
So when we're planning to make, like, our decking, our platforms for the music and movement area, we want to make it out of composite wood, because then you don't have, ever have to replace it. Well, maybe 150 years from now, but that won't be any of us. Unless there's some medical miracles that happen. I'm not planning to be here 150 years from now. So, so we are planning to do that well. And then, you know, so our original goal, our original thought was it would be about $100,000. I'm thinking it's probably going to be more like $130, is my cost estimate is now.
Plus that flush fund. We want to be able to have funding for maintenance. So what we still need, we definitely need funding for the remaining sites to be completed. We're looking at, hopefully, donations of composite lumber to build those platforms, and build things like balance beams for things like the climbing area, plants that are going to be all around the area, grass seed for the open area, lumber, soil for the raised beds, different easels, tables and supplies for nature art, the play kitchen, those are all things that can be built. And we're looking at a smaller scale weather station, just something kind of kid-friendly with a typical thermometer and things like that on there. Items for the building area, birdhouses would be really nice in there, too. And of course, we need storage. We need storage sheds, we need boxes, and then we'll also be having garbage recycling bins around. And actually, SOAR, which is Sustainable Operations in Recycling, is working with us as well to help provide programming for recycling. We need anchors and footings. Obviously, we don't want, we don't want anything ripped out of the ground. And of course, we need people. We need people to help. So, we are still knee-deep in fundraising. We've had little fundraisers, larger-scale fundraisers. We recently had a Culvers Night, which was really successful. They said it was, for a Monday night, it was more like a Friday night. So, kudos to everybody who helped there, or stopped by. I think I saw a couple members through the drive-through that night. So if you came, thank you. The owners of Sears held a brat fry for us, and they raised about $300, which they donated. Then, Sunrise Rotary is holding bouquet, they held bouquet sales, and they contributed $5 to us for every bouquet sold. So we made $60 profit there. Penny, who's the cupcake baking guru, is, is heading the cupcake sales for Thanksgiving.
And that's actually at $359 now. I, you must have had open before I updated, because I just updated that. We had two more bake sales that came in at the end of the day today. So, we're up to $359 in cupcakes, which is about, I think, 18 and a half dozen we'll be baking.
On a couple of weekends, we'll be getting dirty with flour.
Yeah, that's right.
We still have T-shirts and brick sales, so if you don't have your OLC T-shirt yet, just let us know. We're also looking at holding a spaghetti dinner, like we did last year, except this time in January, which we're hoping to hold at, hold at MEAT School again. We're in the process of planning for that. And then, in February or March, we just got ahold of Taco John's to hold Icon Sales. So if you go to Taco John's, they'll say, "Would you like to donate a dollar to Community Outdoor Learning Center?" Go for it. So you can put your name on there, and we'll, we'll see what we can do that way. And then, grant writing, we're on hold for now, but that'll be picking up again soon.
And so, if anybody wants cupcakes for Thanksgiving, we have cupcakes for sale.
They're delicious.
They are really good, yeah. So, thank you. We just really appreciate that you stand behind us and support us on this. It really means a lot. It's been fantastic. And we're going to get there. I was hoping we'd be done by June. I think I might be a little aggressive on my timeline.
That's awesome. Have you reached out? I know at one point, we were involved with the parents group at Washington Elementary, and we were, every year, the fifth grade class leaves a little stuff behind. And we went to the Home Depot, and there was an young lady that was a store manager there that had went to Washington, and she said they have programs in place through the Home Depot that they not only will fund things and donate materials, they actually, it's like a corporate initiative that the employees get involved to help. Have you reached out to them?
Not yet. Home Depot is, is the next one that I'm going to be reaching out to. We're also looking at the Eagle Scouts, who can, you know, do things for those projects in Midstate. So now is, you know, before, it was, it was kind of like, okay, these are people, but now we're officially ready to tap into those resources.
And I'm thinking, maybe the local paper mills might, might donate some money for some naming rights on some things. I work for MD, and I know they've talked about trying to get involved in the community where their employees work. So, I can get in touch with you and give you some names of people to contact, but-
That'd be fantastic.
You know, you're not asking them for $100,000. You know, you're asking them for a donation in kind, and, you know, if we could get some help out there, too, so.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and it was just suggested today, well, it was suggested earlier through Craig, to get in touch with Legacy, and then someone gave us a contact for Legacy today. So, that contact, or that call is out there, too. So hopefully, we can work with the Legacy Foundation as well to get some support.
Yeah, I talked, I forgot to follow up with you. I talked to Mike Bovee, and they are doing small stuff now. So, that might be, or intermittently, let's call it, but that might be a good way to get 5, 10 grand, pretty-
And that's why I left a voicemail today, so.
Perfect. Outstanding.
Sounds good.
No, great work. That's phenomenal.
Well, thank you so much, guys. I think that's years ago.
There's not an OLC thing that goes on without Melissa being there. She's outstanding with respect to what she's done for the Outdoor Learning Center. And by the way, she doesn't just work at MEAT. And she has a tolerated husband that works at MEAT, but she's not there solely. So, they're running around all the time, and she has done, I was only teasing, AJ's a great guy, but-
Sometimes.
Yeah, you do. You know, there's always driver. But, everything. And, and if you didn't attend last year's spaghetti dinner, or pasta feed, or whatever we wanted to call it, you, you need to attend this year, because it's outstanding. If it's a similar format, kids are going to do cool things for you to watch and talk to. There's going to be unbelievably outstanding food. There's going to be tons of people in the gym at MEAT for a relatively short period. It's, it was fun, from start to finish. My wife was out of town, so I didn't have to cook dinner. It worked out well for me. I think I brought all three kids.
And this year, we won't be doing it on the night that the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber has their big event. Last year, it ended up on the same night. We didn't realize that we were overlapping until we were already booked and overlapping.
Well, you were close to sold out, or sold out last year.
Yes, yeah, it worked out okay, yeah, yeah.
But anyway, and Penny, of course, jumping in and doing the things she's done. So recognition to both of these folks, and everybody else that's helping out with the project, because it is, it's pretty cool. And I'm glad you brought that picture, because I didn't get over there in time to see that before it's been all nonsensical. So that's, that, you know, because it looks outstanding.
It's been, yeah, and we had great support from Ed, too. He's, like, he's my go-to. So I'm like, "I don't know this, Ed, help!" And he's been so great, so great. So, thank you.
It'll be next, and then we're done.
It will be next.
But if you forget the calls, you're bad enough.
My husband thinks that, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the student representative report.
Okay, so for Halloween, Deco had their Tricker Can, and they collected a ton of cans for Sweeps. And then, Hosa did a Tricker Coin, and so they raised $1,000 for the National Pediatric Cancer Foundation. And then, Soup Council and Lincoln High School Flannel Club are doing a food and flannel drive, to collect food, flannels, and other necessary items for, to be donated to Sweeps for November 11th through the 15th. And then, on November 2nd, we had the State Cross Country Meet. The cross-country girls and boys team set up and took down the course, and Willis Searing represented Lincoln and placed 87.
Awesome. Thank you for the report. I had the opportunity to go to the State Cross Country Meet for the first time. I did not realize how big of an event that actually is. It's phenomenal.
Charlie Martin mentioned to me that that event, which is only transpires one day, but that event brings over $1.8 million to the community, including Friday, Saturday, Sunday, of course. It's not a multi-day event, but that's what Charlie Martin mentioned to me.
Yeah, they said they were expecting over 2,000 runners and over 10,000 spectators.
Yeah, it's insane.
It was phenomenal. So, thank you for the-
And that's been going on since 2007.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 37th year that it was held at the ridges, so.
It's a great event to host, and it shows you what bringing people to town to do things like is saying, you know, that, that makes a difference to everybody in town, to be honest with you.
And I worked at Concession Stand for four years while my son was going through that. You see a lot of people, see a lot of people that you've known, and, you know, there's a lot of people in those neighborhoods.
It's phenomenal.
And what's COVID?
It's also tough to pick your daughter up for parking duty, just so you know.
We bust over from the Lions Club, so we follow directions.
It helps if you know some law enforcement.
Sure it does. Okay, on that note, we'll move on to the next.
I would make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of October 14th, and the Special Board of Education meeting minutes of October 28th.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of October 14th, and the Special Board of Education meeting minutes of October 28th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Move on to comments from citizens and delegations. We have Mr. John Burr. Like to have a comment tonight?
Just a brief one. I won't go too long.
No, that's fine.
The last time I addressed the board was seven years ago, and I thanked you at that time for the support that I had over 32 and a half years of teaching. And as we all go through our rites of passage, my wife and I are going to start Medicare this year. And I just wanted to come back and say thank you for the OPEB. That has proven to be a great help to us. It was a good thing to have. I hope that you can continue it for the district, for the teachers who are here. I know that for us, it was, it's been very useful. And I just wanted to offer my thanks to you for continuing that program and having that for us. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks, Jack. Okay, we can move on to committee reports. We'll start with the Educational Services Committee. Mary's going to take us there at that.
Since I wasn't here, Ed Services met on Monday, November 4th, and I'd like to thank Sandy for cheering it in my absence. And we'll see if I get through it, or I'll say Sandy should have done. But-
Mary, there was no roll call.
I know, I noticed that. She said you were going to have one, though. Okay, so there were 16 consent agenda items. And does anyone, first of all, want any of these? All right, then I will start. The committee recommends, and I moved to approve ES-1, which was Board Policy 453.4, administering medications for students, and Board Policy 453.4, rural medication administration procedures for first reading. Due to an increase in the access and use of products containing cannabinoids, CBD for therapeutic, and other purposes, policies needed to be updated to incorporate language that aligns with state statute and provides guidance to address CBD products and their use in the school setting. Clarifying language is also included in the policies to indicate that only medications or substances that are FDA-approved and officially recognized by federal standards for medicine will be administered to students. Okay, and then, the next three board policies are changes being recommended to align the policies with current practice, the district strategic plan, and state educator effectiveness issues. So, ES-2 was to approve Board Policy 537, professional staff growth and development for first reading. ES-3 was to approve Board Policy 537.1, attendance at workshops and conferences for first reading. ES-4 was to approve Board Policy 537.2, new colleague orientation for first reading. And ES-5 was to approve the addition of two weeks of keyboarding instruction for all second-grade students to begin in the spring of the 2019-20 school year. This proposal would add two weeks of keyboarding instruction for second graders, which would be provided by the third through fifth grade keyboarding teachers, requiring a .18 FTE increase. Instruction would be rotated among the schools in the spring of the year after completion of third through fifth grade keyboarding. ES-6 was to approve Woods 3 for a one-half credit elective course at Lincoln High School for grades 11 and 12 to begin in the 2020-21 school year. This course would add a third level of instruction in Woods for interested students that have completed Woods 1 and 2. ES-7 was to approve expanding, excuse me, AP Music Theory to one elective credit, and to offer the first trimester of this course as a one-half elective credit option for grades 10, 11, and 12 at Lincoln High School to begin in the 2020-21 school year. Then, the next five motions are dual enrollment proposals. Kathy Stevens hints explained that a number of dual enrollment offerings for students are being proposed, which are contingent upon approval by the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point or Midstate Technical College. Pros and cons of the proposals were highlighted. The committee expressed some concern about the additional workload and coordination that might be thrust upon the district employees to provide these offerings. Craig Dorr, our superintendent, explained that the Technical College and University does lend support in this regard, and anticipates full cooperation and collaboration for them to ensure that responsibilities are shared, and the expansion of offerings to students is a success. Then we went on to ES-8, was to approve the dual credit option for students taking AP European History for one credit in grades 11 or 12 at Lincoln High School, pending approval by UWSP, beginning with the 2020-21 school year. ES-9 was to approve the dual credit option for students taking AP World History for one credit in grades 11 or 12 at Lincoln High School, pending approval by UWSP, beginning with the 2020-21 school year. This proposal would allow students to take the course for dual credit with UWSP, or take the AP exam for potential college credit. And then, ES-10 was to approve allowing the dual credit option for students taking AP Physics 1 for one credit in grades 10, 11, or 12 at Lincoln High School, beginning with the 2020-21 school year. This proposal would allow students to take the course for dual credit within Mid, with Midstate Technical College. Okay, then we went to ES-11, to approve allowing the dual credit option for students in grades 10, 11, or 12 at Lincoln High School who take both physics force and motion, and physics forms of energy, pending approval by UWSP, beginning with the 2020-21 school year. Next was ES-12, to approve allowing the dual credit option for students taking accelerated pre-calculus for one credit in grades 11 or 12 at Lincoln High School, beginning in the 2020-21 school year. And then we went on to ES-13, which was to approve change in the name of DNA Science and Biotechnology to Biotechnology Explorations, beginning with the 2020-21 school year. This change is to better reflect the content of the DNA Science and Biotechnology course offered for one-half credit to grades 11 and 12 at Lincoln High School. Okay, and next on the agenda was a schedule change proposal, and it was made to alter the RAMS schedule for grade 8 in order to address concerns about access to music and world language. After much discussion, it was concluded that a committee should be formed to discuss this and other scheduling considerations for RAMS. Principal Tracy Ginter is developing a committee to gather input on this topic. Any recommendations resulting from these discussions will be brought forward for considerations by the Ed Services Committee in the future. There was no motion made to that. ES-14 was to recommend that before a course for credit can be offered in summer school at Lincoln High School, the course must go through the regular course proposal process as set out in Board Policy 332, beginning with the summer of 2020. ES-15 was to approve the 27 applications for students to participate in the nine requested courses at Midstate Technical College through the Start College Now program in the spring of the 2019-20 school year. And ES-16 was to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with the Boys and Girls Club of the Wisconsin Rapids area to implement the school-based B-grade graduate program at the Wisconsin Rapids area middle school, effective November 11, 2019. And a little bit about that. Tracy, Principal at RAMS, and Andy DeWitt, the Teen Services Director at the Boys and Girls Club of Wisconsin Rapids area, provided details, excuse me, regarding the possible implementation of a B-grade graduate program at RAMS. The club would provide a graduation specialist who would work with up to 20 students, beginning at the seventh grade level, who have been identified by district indicators as in need of assistance to gain the skills necessary to graduate from high school. With no cost to the district, the graduation specialist would be employed by the Boys and Girls Club, but go through an onboarding process for both the club and the district. Ms. Ginter has been determining what space at RAMS will work best to house the program, and explained how communication with families would occur to explain the program and secure the proper releases to have the graduation specialist work directly with students. Similar programs offered in Green Bay and Milwaukee have been met with great success. A draft MOU, which had been modeled after Green Bay's program, has been developed and would be entered into by WRPS and the Boys and Girls Club. They, they hope to have the specialist follow the students to the high school and remain with them through graduation, potentially bringing on an additional graduation specialist in the future through available grant funds. And that's the end of motions.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve ES-1 through ES-16. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then we have one update. Kathy Stevens- Kathy Stevens explained that mixed messages from the DPI indicates that school and district report cards are embargoed from release through at least November 12th and possibly through November 30th. An update will be shared with the Ed Services Committee meeting at the December 2019 meeting, and board members will be apprised with confirmation beforehand by the superintendent as it becomes available for release. And with that, I move to approve the Ed Services Committee meeting report of November 4th.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the November 4th Educational Services Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Thank you, Mary. We'll move on to Ed Services. Sandy.
Business Services.
Ed Services, oh, it says Ed Services there. My bad. Move on to Business Services. John, sorry about that.
Thank you, John. Our committee was called to order on November 4th at 6:45. We had no public comment. Out of our meeting, we have three consent agenda items. Anybody want anything held out? There was nothing. The committee recommends and I move the approval of BS-1, which is the inter-district agreement for a virtual program. We actually had approved these students under Stevens Point. However, Stevens Point and ourselves, we didn't realize that they had moved to Pittsville. So, we had to enter an agreement for these students through the Pittsville group. So, the committee recommends and I move the 66.03.01 Cooperative Agreement for Students Attending the Virtual Program from the Pittsville School District as listed for recommendation to the Board of Education. BS-2 is a plow truck purchase. A little bit of story about this is the current, actually, two trucks that we had, that we were using, were in an accident this during the summer. And Ed had been searching diligently through the used chicken bushes to find a used truck, and he had no luck. These trucks are quite popular. It's a one-ton type of truck with a box that you can put a salter on it and has a plow in the front, and they definitely needed four plowing. So, we put out a bid to six different truck dealers in the area, and two came back with something that they could get right away. However, one didn't quite fit the needs that we were looking for. So, the motion, we make a motion that we purchase a new one truck with a stainless steel dump box from V&amp;H out of Marshfield at a total cost of $46,250.50, which will be funded from the 1920 building and grounds budget. Be recommended for the approval to the Board of Education. We also did get some insurance money back for the trucks that were damaged in the accident. And our last one is a honeywell service program. And Ed explained that this is, the honeywell is changing the way they do their service programs. The service program will replace the existing honeywell operations contract that the board approved in August of 2019. The new honeywell service program provides increased equipment monitoring and real-time data. There is a one-time installation cost, and that's what we are approving today. So, the committee moves and I recommend that we propose to approve the implementation of the new honeywell service program with a one-time setup cost of $8,900, which will be funded from the 2019-20 building and grounds budget for approval to the Board of Education.
Second, the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve BS-1, 2, and 3. Do you have a roll call, Mary? Do you have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Benbow?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
And then the remainder, we had some purchase updates. One would be copies of invoices for the grain pump, which we use in the elementary curriculum, our copy paper for the quarterly purchase. And then, Ed gave us an update on the utility costs, which I believe all the other board members gathered in the packet, showing the different costs of utility during the year. Last year, snow plowing was up tremendously. We're kind of hoping that that doesn't happen again. However, Mother Nature's already tapping into the natural gas bill, so we are seeing some increases, or excuse me, decreases in the lighting due to all of the improvements. Some increases in the, in the natural gas consumption and electric consumption. However, there was an outlier in the fact that East Junior High is no longer used, and as Ed said, we don't have the 98.6 degree heaters in there. Our gas, gas consumption actually has increased in this building to keep, keep it to a normal temperature even for operating, so stuff doesn't freeze. So, with that, then, our, I, committee recommends and I approve the remaining of our meeting minutes.
Second.
And we have a motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the Business Services Committee of November 4th, 2019. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I ask John a question? Wasn't I repeating, the five-year building cost for Lincoln High School? There's some things in yellow, and there's a huge reduction in sewer and water. What, what brought that about?
I just wanted to point out that was our, that, this is actually last year's data, so 1819. That's because we redid the pool. We have a liquid pool cover on now. I think we reduced our water bill by almost 30,000. So, yeah.
It was leaking a lot.
And we were leaking a lot of water out of the old pool, and it was just, that's pretty amazing.
At that rate?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Absolutely. And the commentary around East, so we did have to spend a little more in gas to heat the facility. However, there's a significant reduction in electrical costs, so it's still a net savings to not operate the facility as if there were kids there. So, I think I want to be clear on that piece. But we were surprised to see that bump. But on the same hand, last winter was ridiculously cold. We're on track to not be super warm this winter either. So, you know, it remains to be seen what, where that goes.
Now we can move on to Personnel Services. Thank you.
Personnel Services met last Monday and then the 4th at 6:47. There was no public comment. And from that meeting, we have six consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Number one, the committee recommends and I move to approve the four support staff appointments. Two, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 449, rights and responsibilities of divorced, separated parents, guardians and parent guardians not sharing the same household for second reading. This is a completely new policy, and it's quite extensive. Three, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 443.3, smoking and/or use of tobacco, nicotine products, or electronic smoking devices by students for second reading. Four, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 522.2, smoking and/or use of tobacco, nicotine products for, or electronic smoking devices by employees for second reading. Five, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 831, smoking and/or use of tobacco, nicotine products, or electronic smoking devices on school premises for second reading. These are almost all new policies, lots to it. Six, the committee recommends and I move to approve adding a JV cheer coast position with a 5% co-curricular contract. We have a lot more kids interested in cheering, and it's going to cost about $1,900, might be the total cost or something like that. Does anybody want anything held out?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve PS-1 through PS-6. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then we had an update on open enrollment for our 2019-20 school year. This year, we have a revenue difference of about $261,000 to our detriment. More out than coming in. We're funding a lot of people, are preferring a smaller district. And we also have people that are, they can go all over the state when it comes to virtual schools, so we're also competing with that, too. And with that, I move that the minutes, when we adjourned at, what time did we adjourn? 6:57. With that, I move that the minutes from the November 4th committee meeting be approved as printed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the Personnel Services Committee meeting minutes of November 4th, 2019. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved. Thank you, Sandy. We'll move on to agenda referrals and information requests. Do they have anything this month? Okay, we can move on to the legislative agenda. Roy, what's new?
So, this month, we have six bills before various committees of the legislature. And then we'll take a look at some past and some upcoming events as well, related events as well at the end. So, the first of the six bills, the Senate Committee on Natural Resources and Energy recently held a public hearing on Tuesday, October 22nd. The committee is chaired by State Senator Robert Cowles of Green Bay. And the committee took public testimony on Senate Bill 494, which is authored by Luther Olson of Berlin and Rep. Robert Witke of Racine. Senate Bill 494 restores the school district revenue limit adjustment for energy efficiency projects, as well as adding some new accountability measures. WASBE has come out in support of this bill, supporting Senate Bill 494 based on our member-approved resolutions, and thanks Senator Olson and Representative Witke, both former school board members, for authoring this bill. And WASBE is encouraging all board members to contact their legislators in support of Senate Bill 494. Moving over to the Assembly Education Committee. They held a hearing on three suicide prevention bills on Thursday, October 24th. The Assembly Education Committee is chaired by Rep. Jeremy Thiesfeld of Fond du Lac. And they took bills, took up bills following recommendations from the Speaker's Task Force on suicide prevention. And the first of the three bills that they took up was Assembly Bill 528. This is relating to grants to support peer-to-peer suicide prevention programs in high schools and granting rulemaking authority and making an appropriation. Assembly Bill 528 requires DPI to establish a competitive grant program to award grants for the purpose of supporting peer-to-peer suicide prevention programs in public, private, and tribal high schools. Under Assembly Bill 525, a grant may be awarded to support an existing peer-to-peer suicide prevention program or to implement a peer-to-peer suicide prevention program at a high school. Under this bill, each high school for which a grant is awarded, DPI may award the governing body up to 1,000. And this bill, Assembly Bill 528, further specifies that DPI may renew a grant for an individual school for up to three additional years. The second of the three bills that that committee took up was Assembly Bill 525. This is relating to grants to the Wisconsin Safe and Healthy School Center and making an appropriation. And Assembly Bill 525 requires that DPI annually awards a grant to a cooperative educational service agency to support collaborative projects between DPI and CISA's that provide training and technical assistance to districts. And the third bill is Assembly Bill 531. This is relating to requiring that student identification cards must include contact information for suicide prevention hotlines. Further in this bill, it provides that if a school board operator of an independent charter school or a governing body of a private school issues identification cards to pupils or college students, the school board operator or governing body shall include the identification card. It should contain certain information for suicide prevention and crisis support hotline information. So, that was in the Assembly Education Committee. Moving on to the Assembly Committee on Substance Abuse and Prevention. They held a public hearing to take testimony on Assembly Bill 422. That bill would raise the legal age for sale, purchase, and possession of cigarettes, nicotine, and tobacco products from 18 to 21. And WASBE has come out in support of this bill as well. Now, the one that has been getting the most attention this month in terms of the bills is Assembly Bill 459. This was taken up by the Assembly Committee on State Affairs, which is chaired by Representative Rob Swerington of Rhinelander. They held a public hearing to take testimony on this bill, which incorporates cursive writing into the state model English language arts standards and requires cursive writing instruction in elementary grades. As it stands right now, WASBE opposes this bill based on our resolution opposing unfunded mandates and supports local school board control on curricular decisions. And you may ask, why is this bill before the State Affairs Committee as opposed to the Education Committee? The Assembly has a rule about committees not hearing bills authored by the chair of the committee. And in this case, this bill is authored by Jeremy Thiesfeld, who chairs the Education Committee. So, they're taking this one up in the State Affairs Committee. And that was Assembly Bill 459. Lastly, just a couple of events. The Legislative Advocacy Conference was held November 2nd in Stevens Point. And I was able to attend the Legislative Panel at the end. And I thought it was a fairly, it was an interesting, to put it lightly, discussion. It started off strong, but then it kind of took a partisan nosedive. But it was, it was interesting. They, WASBE is posting all the materials on their website. They have all the PowerPoints, all the handouts, and they're having short videos of two out of the four presenters on there as well. So, it was an interesting, interesting day and interesting discussions. Lastly, registration is open for the state convention. I know that's not till January, but registration's open now, and I believe the date's this year, January 22nd to the 24th.
Let Marine know if you're interested.
Okay.
Get the van lined up.
Thank you for your report, Charlie.
I was watching Wisconsin Eye last weekend, unfortunately. And Senate Joint Resolution 59. The Republicans are up in arms because the governor went and increased the amount for special education. So, what they're proposing is a change in the Constitution that no governor could ever increase an amount in the budget. So, they're very, I would say, anti-education right now when you look at this. But that's what they're, that's what they're leaning towards. So, changing the Constitution's so that, once again, they're curtailing the power of the governor. And it is called the Governor's Budget, I believe, isn't it? Okay, anyway, it's just something to watch.
Interesting times.
They always are, aren't they? All right, thanks, you have the report. We move on to new business. Item A, Possible Action on Employee Appointments, Resignations, and Retirement.
Oh, we got to do bills.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad again. This code must have got you. All right, how about the bills? We'll start there.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, that receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. We have a roll call, please, Mary?
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Benbow?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. Now, we'll move on to new business. Possible action on employee appointments, resignations, and retirement requests.
We got a lengthy list of hourly staff hires over the past week. Just a couple points of emphasis. We have additions, new positions. Melissa Hoffmann is a new position, and Scully. These are both been added based on student addition or need. The rest are all replacements. As you can see, there's a couple resignations at the bottom that the, a couple are the fill-ins for. Diane Coles is filling in for now Cheltenham Zirik out of Food Services Secretary.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the eight support staff appointments as printed and the two support staff resignations.
Second.
Yeah, a motion, a second, to approve the eight support staff appointments and two support staff resignations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, update and discussion on future installation of additional surveillance cameras on school buses.
There was a agenda report or information request from the board this, on this topic, and that's why the information's being brought forward. If it's something the board wants to consider further, we can look at other systems. We can go out to bed. We could, on different camera systems, we could come with a different configuration. There's a lot of different things we could do, depending on what the board direction would be. But enclosed is some prices. The price there would be for the system outlined as three hundred-degree cameras. I think you saw the color page in there of what it would look like. And then a recorder and the total price there. And then, there's also possible need for cameras in our own vans as a consideration to have a price there for that. Just a much smaller system, and it's $882 per van on that.
This Sion system that you see, and I think there's some details in the background information as well, is kind of like the gold standard with respect to bus camera functionality. And you can see, just based on the image, the kind of clarity that you get with the bus surveillance. And I think it's relevant to mention that it's about $2,000 per bus, give or take. And we run over sixty routes, but sixty's kind of in our ballpark, which would very clearly make that number make that number $120,000 real quick. Um, there's other options, but I would argue you probably don't want to go super cheap and then have issues with identifying, you know, images of who kids are and then having those kind of questions. Um, but we only explored what, uh, there's a number of districts that use this camera package, a number of, uh, bus companies that have them outfitted on there, which is why Dan, um, solicited that information first. And of course, we can, you know, like Dan said, bring forward four or five or whatever number of potential possibilities and look at, uh, different costings. But, but they recommended was the three 180-degree cameras and that gives you kind of a full view of the bus. And then you also have the capability of adding a camera that goes out the front and a camera that goes out the side and, you know, all these other pieces as well. Um, but I think our goal was really to cover student behavior, more so than it was people running, you know, running the, running the bus stop sign and, and that sort of thing. Um, but it may be beneficial to look at, you know, some flexibility with what that, what that could be. So we kind of await your direction regarding what the next step would be about if you want to see more and, and move a proposal forward based on not only quality, but also cost as well.
I had no information from, from others in this case, except sometimes I wonder if there's a dominant business in a particular area, if they, if they kind of run things so that they make the most money as if, uh, you know, it's ours or you just have to have ours because it's the only one. And I have no evidence that that's the case, but have you thought about that?
Yes, um, I have thought about that. They do have, they, uh, it's actually a Canadian company. Um, they, the presence here in Wisconsin is, uh, they have a dealership, I might've forgotten the name of it, it was right here. Nelson's Bus, which is down sort of the part of the state, um, is a representative for Seon cameras. So they're, they're the local rep. And then they're, they're working on putting in, uh, locations around the U.S. because of the import-export taxes and things like that. So they can get items shipped directly to the United States rather than go through Canada.
I know when in the committee, we talked with the, the bus people and we've got, I think, three buses, I mean, three or five buses camered right now.
Yes, six.
Six. And then what they're doing currently is if there is a troubled route, they move this, they take the bus with a camera on that route and that's how they record it right now. Um, I know we had a discussion with Lammers, is, is this similar to the company Lammers uses currently?
No, Lammers uses a different camera system. In fact, the camera system we have in the buses, I think, is one of them. The, the problem with the high-back seats, the way, the way Lammers is configured is they have one in the back and one in the front.
Right.
And with the high-back seats, you're not always able to see what's going on in the seats. But this design, it's actually looking down into the seats. That was the, the difference. Um, now, I don't know if, uh, the company that Lammers uses has other types of cameras available. We haven't checked on that.
I would think it's something, I mean, we've talked about it in committee multiple times as far as what we want to do with it. And I think Sandy, you brought up the referral for it.
And what?
You should bring up the referral.
For the referral? Because I saw that we were, we were paying to have these cameras on the buses that are charging us for it.
Yes.
So there was a fee, but are the fees associated with these cameras or we just own them and then we don't have to worry about the, I mean, that was a concern then.
At, at these prices, um, yeah, we just don't want to be no more fees on them. There'd just be replacement costs or maintenance.
Yeah. And I think on occasion, you mentioned there might be, um, a software download that you might have to pay for, but the bulk of the cost for these would be the upfront cost. And he also said, you don't even need to download if you don't want to. So once you have them installed, you don't need to update the operating systems on this hard drive.
He indicated it was a school district we're using, our principal system was 12-years-old.
12-years-old, yeah.
So how does that work? I mean, is they're installed in buses that we don't own? If there's any issues of maintenance, if there's problems with them?
That is something we're going to have to talk with the contractors about. And maybe that's, that, that's, I guess we're having some direction for the board. I'll, all they want to handle that in the contract with, with our contractors.
But they do say that, the school bus companies say that having those cameras on board is, is priceless.
Yes.
I mean, it's very, very beneficial for them to have those and that they've been able to help with a lot of situations because of the cameras.
And I imagine they have any issues with working with them as far as getting that taken care of. I mean, we currently own the cameras, we've gotten off.
Yeah.
Which are our property. So we're still, we're working with them now with the cameras.
The, that's correct. The, the fee was-
Why would we pay the fee then?
Fee was a proposal, proposal by them in negotiations. Um, and they indicated that based on total cost of the camera, a year's worth of the fee doesn't pay for the total cost of the camera is, was there argument in that, um, over a period of time, paying that fee would pay for the cameras. And, uh, that, that's something I think the committee needs to look at.
So did we buy the cameras for the Lammers buses or are we paying a fee for them?
Well, right now, we're paying a fee.
We didn't purchase them.
Part of the purchase is-
It's part of the-
Oh.
Yeah. Originally, years ago, 10 years ago, prior to 10 years ago, we actually purchased the cameras and had them installed.
Yeah.
Um, the, the way we're paying for it now was a proposal from, in negotiations, it came out in negotiations. And, uh, we-
They purchased the cameras?
Technically, I mean, we're, we're paying for the cameras whether we own them or not.
Right.
Probably not.
Okay, I'll get it.
No, because did we buy them upfront?
No, we didn't actually-
No.
Under this contract, we don't buy them upfront. We're paying for the, the fee is paid.
We, we used to buy them upfront. Now we're paying a fee that's part of the monthly fee that we pay.
Because is there new cameras on the buses or what? Sorry.
Will they eventually be paid up there? I mean, will we eventually own them without a fee?
Well, that's the question.
Updates of the cameras and as they switch them to buses.
And the maintenance.
The fee, the fee is supposed, with the fee, they're supposed to keep the cameras updated. And when they break down, they're supposed to replace them. So at that point, it's, it's, we technically don't own them anymore. So that was a change, that was a change, uh, probably five, six years ago.
So here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to give you guys more information on the bus cameras because I'm confused. So I'm guessing you are as well. But the question is still legitimate, which is, uh, in that, so I'm talking about the bus cameras that have been on buses, the, the existing. I'll, I'll give you a little historical, uh, what do you call it? You know, education session on that topic. But, uh, the question that we do have for you is, do you want to see bids to move forward without fitting the majority or all of our buses, um, with cameras? And I would argue, there would be no cost increase. If we're buying the things and installing on buses, we wouldn't pay any more to the bus company because the buses have cameras on because we put them on there. So that's common sense to me. I don't know that we would pay more because they're, we get to use the cameras we put on the buses ourselves. I mean, so do you want to see another, you know, a few additional options and what the overall cost might be to say, you know, three to five potential solutions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. You said you researched other districts. Were these buses that were owned by the district or were these buses, like, we have a contract with them and who put the, the cameras on those buses?
I asked that question, the answer's both. But I said to the gentleman that's from Nelson's-
Correct.
-because they also run buses. You know, they not only sell these Seon camera systems, but they are, they're a bus terminal. They, a bus contractor.
They transport for a number of districts.
Yeah, but they also service, they drive.
Oh, I didn't know they drove.
Yeah.
They, they-
Absolutely.
For a number of districts in southern parts of the state.
So I asked the question, do you folks, uh, put cameras on your own buses or is that what the districts pay, you know, what? And he told me that it's rare that a district pays for them and puts them on buses. However, that does happen. Um, he said, they do. Like, they buy them themselves and put them on and other contractors buy them themselves and put them on. And then clearly, there would be, that'd be passed on to the consumer, right? Um, but there are some circumstances, he, but he indicated it wasn't quite as frequent as, or as commonplace as when a school would purchase them to be installed for a contractor. So it's both is really what it is. So we'll get bus camera bids for you at some month in the near future and I will provide for you in, probably in the form of a board update, some historical context on what's happening with cameras on buses currently and how we did pay for them and how we're paying for them now and how that came to be. And if there's more questions, then you can let me know and we'll keep digging until we get it figured out.
All right. There is one bus that's not in here and that's the installation cost. Um, this is just the hardware.
Do we have any ballpark idea what it would cost to install a camera? I mean-
They, they didn't give us a specific cost. What they said is they could bring, they could actually do, they could bring, uh, some guys, a guy up or two guys, whatever, and install them. Or they could show the bus company how to install them and, and, you know, a couple buses and then, and then the bus company would install them. So there's a number of ways to do that. So they didn't, they didn't give us any price either way, one way or the other.
If this isn't like a day for bus though, I think they indicated, once they're, once you install one system, you could pretty much, you know, it's, it's virtually identical and-
Didn't they tell us in one of the negotiations that these buses come with the domes in there to put the cameras in? So they're basically set up that you would open the dome and plug it in and it's good to go?
Well, it's not quite so simple with this one because these are placed on the sides.
Yep.
So, um, different position than the ones that we are, the, different position than cameras we have in our buses. Ours are back and front and, um, now with the high-back seats, it's difficult to sometimes identify.
Some seats I can't see anything.
So, yeah, if you saw the pictures on this, these cameras are actually looking down into the seats.
But it's not, you mean, you're talking a couple of screws and a handful.
Yeah.
It's plug and play. You know, once you get the wires running, the cameras screwed into the sides of the buses or the top, all it is is plug it in and power it up and go to town. So this isn't an extensive, um, what do you call it, installation process?
In fact, the new buses, you can order with, you can actually order with the cabling run for the cameras already or actually with cameras installed. So there's, with the new, the new, if you buy a new bus.
So do, do our contractors, uh, regularly add new buses to their fleet?
They do. Um, Lam, both, both Lammers and Seon, they do add new buses to the fleet.
So could we-
However, we don't get many of the new buses for Lammers.
Not, not from Lammers. We have, in contract, we have an age, um, we have an age on the buses they use and then they, my suspicion is they take them and move to some other district from here. Uh, because if they're maintained well, um, they'll, they'll go longer than what we have in-
But I'm just saying, if, if they're buying new buses, you would think they would add this on, the capability of cameras or cameras.
Yeah, the, the new bus companies, the new bus bodies that they buy, you can get them with camera systems run, already run, cabling run or whatever for cameras.
I don't know what they're doing. I don't know what they, what their specs are for new buses. And I also don't know what that means in cost. Because a new bus now is like 95 grand and I don't know what that means, but I can ask them those questions too.
But, yeah, we don't have a lot of new buses on, with, with Lammers. Uh, but we, uh, they do meet the contract as far as the buses that are running. Um, the new buses, uh, we do, Seon does add a few new buses every year.
All right. So if there is nothing else, looking at the calendar, it doesn't look like we have a Student Wellness Committee meeting next Monday. Other than that, there's not currently anything else scheduled for November. So that, we adjourn. Thank you.